There is actually two positions for the Asset Management Commission. There's one full term of five years expiring in 2026 and there's a filler of one year expiring in 2021. No one came forward and applied. I don't know if anybody reached out to you personally. Does anybody have any nominations? Okay. Next, we have the Budget Committee. There's also two spots, but we're going to take it one at a time. The first one is the full year, the full term. It's a three-year term expiring December 1st of 2023, and that is appointed by the Town Council.
Okay. If I may?
Hello?
We're done, I'm sorry.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Ms. O'Hara to the one three-year term.
Do you have a second, Ms. O'Hara? Give it a little bit, yeah. No second? Okay, anybody else?
I would like to nominate Andrew Barca for the budgetary. One more at a time or hold it one at a time, right?
Okay. I'm sorry, who did you nominate?
Andrew Barca.
Okay. I think that... Did he withdraw on that? For now?
All right, you can have a second. Merideth Sousa.
Merideth Sousa? Okay, we have a nomination, Merideth Sousa. Do we have a second on that? Second? Roll call, please.
Mr. President, could I hold you up on that?
Why is that?
Are you identifying which person is going for which term?
Yes.
I did not know it.
She already, she got, the clerk made that known as to which position this was going to be filled.
So it should be one, it should be one vote for each position, each term. It shouldn't be one vote for both terms, for both people.
No, we understand that. There wasn't a second for the other people.
There wasn't a second.
I apologize. I stand corrected.
Okay.
Okay, so what we have, a motion for Merideth Sousa for the first position.
And a second, yes.
And we have a second.
Yes. So, Ms. Alves?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yeah.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have another term that's filling a three-year term, so it will expire December 1st of 2021, and this is also a Town Council nomination.
I would like to make a motion to appoint Cheryl Marandola for the one, finish the one three-year term that will expire on December 1st, 2021.
I'll second. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay, so now we have the Conservation Commission. These are all three-year terms expiring December 1st of 2023, and they are all Town Administrator Appointments.
Council members, with your approval, I would like to appoint Christopher Serrano, Stephen Berenbeck, John Massey, and John Russo, those are the four I'd like to appoint to the Conservation Commission.
So now you guys can do it all in one, because it's all the same expiration date.
The motion to approve the Administrator's Choices? Conservation Commission, through the motion?
Sure.
Second?
Okay.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the Economic Development Commission. We have one person that, with two positions, so it's up to you on which term you want him to fill. There's one that will expire in 2023 and one that will expire in 2024.
Mr. President, I would nominate for the term that expires in 2024, Mr. Paul Jones. And at this moment, that's all that I have. So I'm seeking the approval of Mr. Paul Jones for that five-year term. The conclusion of five-year term.
Okay. Will anybody want to make a motion to approve the Administrator's Recommendation? Your motion, second? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Next, we have the Historic District, Historic District Commission. It's a three-year term expiring in 2023, and it's a position by the Town Council, and there are two spots available. So if you want to take one and then do the other?
One at a time?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Keith Navy to one of the three-year terms that expires on December 1st, 2023.
I'll second that. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Next one?
So same Historic District Commission, we have two spots, so it's the same expiration date, just need one more person.
Okay. Anybody have someone else?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Jeff Fontaine.
That's a motion for Jeff Fontaine, is a reappointment, with a second? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay, here's the tricky one. We have the Juvenile Hearing Board. We have one spot available for a full term expiring in 2023 per the Town Administrator.
Oh, you weren't going to take the Town Council one first?
I can do that. One spot per the Town Council.
Yeah, we can follow along.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Bob Gillette to the one three-year term that will expire on December 1st, 2023, to the Juvenile Hearing Board.
Is there a second? I'll second. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
No.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Council members, for my appointment to the Juvenile Hearing Board, I'd like to reappoint Mr. Robert Gurnon. The term expires December 1st, 2023, and for the second spot, which is a vacancy, which expires December 1st, 2022, I'd like to appoint April Lombardi.
You have to take that one motion at a time.
Okay, so we'll take one motion at a time. I'm looking for the acceptance of my appointment, Robert Gurnon, to Juvenile Hearing Board up until December 1st, 2023.
Is there a motion? Wait a second. For the Administrator's Recommendation? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, council members, to fill the vacancy that will expire on 12/1/2022, I'm appointing April Lombardi to that position.
Sure.
We have a motion, wait a second. I'll second, Mrs. Lombardi. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
So now we have the Parks and Recreation Commission. It's a two-year appointment that expires December 1st, 2022. Your Town Administrator Appointments, and there are seven spots available. Because they're all the same term, you can take all his appointments at the same time.
Okay.
I'd like to go over to Victor.
We can do that, too.
If you want.
Thanks. For appointing, my first appointment is Ann Phelan Lilly.
Motion to approve Ann Lilly for the Administrator? Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Council members, Mr. President, second appointment, Cheryl Marandola.
Sure.
Second? I'll second. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, council members, third appointment, Anna Parsons.
Sure.
We have a motion, Anna Parsons, is her second? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, the fourth appointment, Chase Holder.
Sure.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, council members, fifth appointment, I want to make sure I remember my math right here, yeah, fifth appointment, April Lombardi.
I would...
Is there a second? Second? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, sixth appointment, council members, sixth appointment, Jessica Leitner.
Sure.
Second? I'll second. Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, council members, seventh appointment, Derek McDonald.
Sure.
And there is a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Okay, next we have the Personnel Board. There are also three spots for a three-year terms expiring December 1st of 2023, and these are Town Administrator Appointments.
Mr. President, council members, I would like to do these individually. First appointment, Robert Gurnon.
Sure. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, second appointment, Carol Drainville.
Sure. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Mr. President, council members, third appointment, Suzanne Burney.
Sure. Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Next, we have the Planning Board. We're going to take the full five-year term by the Town Council first. It will expire December 1st of 2025.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jeff Porter to the one five-year term that will expire on December 1st, 2025, to the Planning Board. Second?
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
No.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Next, we have the First Alternate. It's a one-year appointment expiring December 1st of 2021, and that's also by the Town Council.
I would nominate Roland Benai, who's a reappointment to that position.
Second.
Roll call.
Mrs. Alves, I'm sorry, Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Second alternate, which is also a one-year appointment, appointment by the Town Council. It's expire expiration date of December 1st, 2021.
I'd like to nominate Captain Kennedy.
Will we have a second for Captain Kennedy? Second? Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
We now have the Public Safety Commission. We have a three-year term expiring on December 1st of 2023 by the Town Council.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Derek Poe to the one, the one three-year term that's on December 1st, 2023, to the Public Safety Commission. Second?
Roll call, uh, roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
We then have a term to finish a three-year term that will expire December 1st of 2022, appointment by the Town Council.
I'd like to nominate Chris Massey.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Are you going to see any citizens next?
I am.
Okay, I would love to say something on this one. I would like to ask the council if we can continue this through the following meeting. We had such an outpouring of interest for this, for this board. It's currently a five-member board. At the next meeting, I would like to ask the solicitor to amend the ordinance and that create this board and make it a seven-member board. That's my request. If anybody has any objections to that? Okay, so we'll get into...
Mr. President, I have no objections to your reviewing the resolution or the ordinance. I'm pretty sure it was a...
Yeah, the resolution, I follow that.
I'm not against reviewing it. The reality is, we had this, this group has been enforced for two years with three members, and they've never met.
Right, and which was, which is why I was very surprised, because early on, as it takes some while to get some legs and take off. But right now, we have a lot of people that are very interested in this, and a lot of really good people. And I figure if we move it, move it up a little bit, we can accommodate more people. We, it's just a discussion, you know, we, at the next meeting, we may end up agreeing that we won't change it. But I would just like to have the discussion at the next meeting.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yep.
For the 16 years I've been on council, and the years I've served on Juvenile Board and also Town Plan, I've never seen such an outpouring of interest of people that wish to serve our town. An absolutely phenomenon to look through the interest for all these people, and explain it on the record. It was amazing.
It really was. They made our job very difficult.
That is, that is different.
So that's, so we'll just do that with the C's, and like I said, we may, as a group, decide that we'll keep that part. But I'm just asking that we move it over to the next meeting, and we can have that discussion. But right now, that discussion is not on the agenda, so we don't think... All right, so continue, please.
Next, we have the Sewer Commission. It's a five-year term expiring December 1st, 2025, and that's one spot filled by the Town Council.
I'd like to make a motion to reappoint William Dory to the one five-year term that will expire on December 1st, 2025, to the Sewer Commission.
Second then?
Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
There's also a vacancy term to finish the five-year term from December 1st, 2024. Is there anybody for that?
That is time.
And then it's just the zoning board, Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. Iglesias, are you with us?
With you, Mr. President.
All right, so we have an interesting situation for the zoning board that I just want to share with everybody. It's a four-year term. Right now, excuse me, it's a five-year term, and one of the people that is requesting to be reappointed only has four years left on his five-year term, and I think, and I discussed it with the solicitor, there is an issue with appointing somebody that can't fulfill their term. I'm not looking to change the, I'm not looking to change the ordinance on this one as a result of, for just one person, but it's just that this one person does break the light a problem, that when they made these two five-year terms, they staggered some people that were just getting on. So those people that were staggered were not, they staggered them one, two, and three years. So those people that were staggered were not actually able to complete two five-year terms. What should have been done at the time when they did this was to make, was to grandfather those people that were staggered, grandfather that in. And that was not, that's not the way it went down, so once again, I'd like to have the solicitor look into this and possibly make the recommendations for, at the next meeting, unless anybody has any fruit for this one.
We have reappointed, two years ago, I believe, we appointed somebody to a four-year term. And the issue comes up is when, when they fill an unexpired term, which normally isn't a problem when they're doing that, except for our ordinance says, planning a zoning board, you can serve for 10 years, then you can fill off. That's the case with him. He could have been an over that, he filled an unexpired term, and he got appointed to a five-year term. Now he's up for another, that is open for a five-year term. We can appoint him to a five-year term. The ordinance says after four years, he has to step down, and then they will get back in the same circle. We try to appoint someone for a one-year term, and if they want to get reappointed, they may not get reappointed, or they may not. The issue has to do with reappointment. He can fill a five-year term. We did it, we did it with another member that's on his own board right now.
Well, I don't doubt that it was done, and I just, Mr. Iglesias seems to think that that could be problematic by putting appoint someone that can't fulfill their term to a five-year term where they can only serve four years. Mr. Iglesias, can you make a clarification on this?
Yes, Mr. President and members of the council, I was just suggesting to the council, the president, that I would like to put that ordinance in question on the agenda for discussion, so people understand what the potential problem is. And if you disagree, you can move forward with the appointment. If you agree, then at least you give me an opportunity to modify, you know, modify the ordinance if you so desire. That's, that's my request. It's just a matter of making sure that people know that I'm a little concerned with the requirement that you appoint someone for a five-year term knowing that they cannot serve five years. It's kind of inconsistent. The appointment, which is a charter appointment, is inconsistent with the ordinance that is, can be changed by the council, and I think the ordinance should be reviewed by the council just out of an abundance of caution. That's my recommendation, if you would so allow.
Mr. President, if I may, Mr. Iglesias, I, taking a look at this ordinance, this change in charter, one of the things that comes to mind, and I don't have this in, so you should know the answer before you ask the question, but I'm going to go out there and ask this question. Mr. Leggeri, does he serve as one year as an ultimate, or does he serve as one year fulfilling as a full-voting member? That, I don't know.
I do.
You do?
He was an ultimate.
He was an ultimate, so that should weigh into the thought process, because he was not a full-voting member. He was serving, as you know, if someone could make a meeting that he was present to serve, so I think some of that should weigh into his decision for the five-year term.
So what are you saying, that he should be able to serve the full five years?
That's going to be your decision, I just want...
Is that, is that what you're saying?
That's, if you're asking my suggestion?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, so out of an abundance of caution, we should let the, I'm thinking we should let the solicitor look into this a little, and we don't have to do it tonight.
Right.
It's not going to change anything. Nothing in government that really has to be done right away, so I would suggest that we just let Mr. Iglesias look into this a little further. It won't hurt him, let it wait till he's... You going to give it that? Yeah?
Thank you, thank you, members of the council.
Now, but did you have anything else?
That is it, good sir.
Give me a second. Okay, moving on then, to D, discussion by council, vote of other action on request to abandon a portion of old Tiff Road, assess its plat for lots 46, 47, 48, 48A, 49, 431, read 9, read 191. And this is just a scheduling of a public hearing. We just need to schedule a public hearing for this, Madam Clerk. So if you could give us a date, just that we have to have notice
So...
to the two of letters and the advertisements.
The first step is normally to the Planning Board, but you have their decision in your packet, so that's why it's going directly to a public hearing, if you so choose. I do need to advertise for three weeks, so that would pretty much put us either at the end of February or the beginning of March. It's up to you.
Why don't we do it for the first meeting in February?
Either the second meeting, February or the first. Okay.
Mr. President, I just want to make sure the clerk is checked with the paper that you'd be able to get the ad in?
That shouldn't be a problem.
Okay.
Discussion by council, vote of other action on resolution establishing the Hall of Review Committee.
Mr. President, if I, if I may, I want to make a motion, have you table this, and look at this after we go over the contract with Weston and Sampson. Right now, I think, doing it this way, we're putting a copy of the rules. All due respect.
Okay. Is that a motion? Yes. All right, we have a motion to table this. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
No.
Mrs. O'Hara?
No.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yeah, I'll table it till the next meeting, yes.
Not till the next meeting, just further in the agenda, that's all. Oh, so I'm not pushing it back.
He just wants to hear the contract first.
I want to, I want to...
My apologies, I misunderstood. See, I misunderstood, maybe we both misunderstood that. All right, okay.
Mr. President, do you want to look for the motions, start over again?
Yeah.
I think Mr. Carbo might have.
Yeah, I think we...
It's under the script, everybody would...
So we're going to table it. The motion is to table this until we review the contract from Weston and Sampson, and then we'll bring that back. Okay, I misunderstood it as well.
So do you want to roll call that again?
Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mister Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mister Vadne?
Yes.
Mister Bureau.
Yes.
Discussion by council vote of other action on agreement for engineering services between the town of Los Smithfield and Weston and Sampson Engineering Incorporated. Uh, Mr. Iglesias spoke to the representative of Weston and Sampson, and they were very admirable to increasing the number of, uh, in-person meetings at no additional cost. Uh, from two meetings with the board and two meetings of the public, two meetings in a public hearing, two. What they now agree to is, uh, four meetings with the board. Uh, two meetings with the staff and two meetings with the town council, and they did this at no additional cost.
Well, the government's started one from four to nine meetings.
Yeah.
And also the assurance of availability of the, via telephone, uh, so, yes, uh, Mr. Iglesias did a great job on that.
Mr. President, there's also a typo, um, in, that's been corrected, um, by phone conversation today. On page six of your, of your document. The, um, the umbrella insurance, the number is right, it's ten million, the wording is wrong, it says one million. The, the number is ten million.
Okay.
And that was confirmed by Carolyn Wells, uh, today, and she's available by phone if the council has any other questions. She's not online, but she's available by her cell phone, I can reach her.
Okay, so we're looking basically then to approve the contract in one motion and then authorize the administrative sign in another motion, am I correct?
Correct.
Yes, Mr. President, with the, uh, the edits that Mr. Iglesias spoke about under the umbrella policy, that it should verbally say ten million. As well as, numerically it says ten million, but verbally it should be written up there.
Okay, so as amended?
Yeah, and then I'll sign tomorrow.
Okay, so, uh, we'll entertain a motion to approve the contract? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Mister Iglesias, on the time here.
Point, point, can we have a motion in a second and then we can discuss it, that's the proper way to do it. If you want to do it right, let's do it right, because I have a lot of issues on this, in this contract as well.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the contract as amended?
Two moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
I'd like discussion, please.
I'm sorry, I apologize, uh, discussion, with the, with the bad thing, go ahead.
Page one, right at the top, this agreement is not made between the town of Smithfield and who is town manager, it is with the town of Los Smithfield and town administrator. First and foremost, that's the first thing. Page two.
Okay, I'll get it as he goes.
Two point one point two, we have to do a complete assessment of existing conditions. Of site instructors, and, and you can, you can read it all yourself, but this, this is basically what, what we're hiring this time to do. And then I have two point one seven, one eight, one nine, and two point ten, with those meetings, which I'm told now have been updated, we had talked about having more meetings. Um, I'm really not sure, there are just two meetings with the council, is that sufficient? That's what you're looking for, I will look for more, for more time, more meetings with these folks. In two point one point eight, attend at the four steering committee meetings, is this steering committee meeting, is this the Halliwell Review Committee that we're, that we're creating? Is that what the steering committee is?
Mr. Iglesias, can you clarify that?
I, they, they, um, at that, uh, since the Halliwell Review Committee was not created, they put a steering committee as a generic term. So if you adopt the Halliwell, it'll be the Halliwell Steering Committee.
Just wanted to make sure that that's what it is.
Yeah, if, if you adopt it, that's, that's the generic term for it, so we.
On page four. Two point one, responsibilities of the owner, designate and write in a person back to the owner's representative. Um, I think we should, we need to discuss that before we go forward, knowing who the owner's representative is, in this case, um. I would think that in, in the case of this, this project and for what, what's entailed, we should be designated either the town administrator or the town planner. To be that, to be that graphic, my, my preference would be, no disrespect to the administrator, would be the town planner. Uh, no disrespect taken, Mister Vadne, none whatsoever, of course, I work in conjunction with the planner, you've had two for one. A two for, a two for.
Alright, so just to be clear, then, then you're saying that the owner's representative should be clarified in here as either the administrator or the planner?
Not necessarily in this contract, we need to know as a board who's gonna be that owner, because that's part of this thing, is that we're doing, in writing, it was, we're saying who the owner's representing. And so we should, we should know who that's going to be, as we enter into this contract. If, if you wanted to simplify, you could say the town administrator or the designated town administrator. This way, should something happen, if I fall upon your help, then we could designate, uh, the planner, or we can start right over, and if you fall upon, or here it's Halliwell time, then I'm the person.
Uh, Mr. President, just a, a, a point of clarification, um, while I certainly agree with the sentiment, I don't think you should identify. The owner's representative in the contract, I don't think that was the intention, just to, just to clarify who that would be, I assume.
No, it's not my intent to, to list that in, in the agreement.
Okay.
But it's so that this board knows who that owner's represent, that's all, we need to know.
I agree with that, I agree with.
And Sampson needs to know this, we need to know this, who this is going to be, correct, we're not, we're not looking to modify it, we're just, we're correct, I'm just bringing it up as a point, as a point of, of classification, we need to know who that, who that's going to be, as we go forward with this. Um, Article four, type of the project, it's, it's, it's a one-year project, just so that everyone's aware, it's going to take these guys one year to do this complete study. So, if I may, also, Mister Vadne, if you're on Article four point one, also say, starting with ten days of signing of this agreement, including with the one year. So, uh, we have one or less to clock on this, ten days. Article five, the payment is going to be eighty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, yes. It's my understanding that this is coming from a grant that we received, am I correct? Mr. Tomlin.
Cynthia, you on?
Mister Kravitz then?
Come on, but it's, I think Tom needs to answer that.
Okay, Tom is also on.
Tom, they're requiring if the eighty-three thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars is covered with a grant?
No, not, not the Halliwell, um, the grant we have, I think you can think of is the Commerce R I money, um, or the ramp work at Palm Hill.
That's why I was confused, because I was like, a grant, I think this is coming from the bond money.
Yes.
We have four hundred thousand aside for Halliwell.
Okay. Article six, just, just, just so that we're all aware, general liability insurance, um, I had the overall insurance highlighted, it needs to show that it's handling that one, I mean. Professional service insurance, additionally ensure that it, my suggestion that, that we have all of those in hand before we sign this, this agreement. Um, satisfaction indemnifications, we all know that there is asbestos on that site, but if you read through this thing, the document tells they have no responsibility for discovery or whatever. The whole, this whole project, and, and I just wonder how we're gonna accomplish that, knowing that, we all know it, that there's asbestos on that site. It was just, it's something that really jumped out at me, because that's one of the issues with, with the mission of, of any of those buildings, is the asbestos that's there. Um, and, and where it says, if he or she knows of any reasonable suspicion, we suspect that hazardous materials, including materials of presence, and, because now they're getting into the post, then. They, you know, they're, they're not, they're not responsible for it, and it's like, that's the whole point of having part of this study, is to identify where, where those issues are.
I don't see them, uh, I don't see that being an issue, they're not talking about, they're not identifying, they just said they're not responsible for it.
I think it's a, no responsibility for the discovery, presence, handling, disposal.
And that's not it, that's not what we're tasked with to do anyway, is we're, that's all, if they discover.
No, we're not, but they're saying they have no responsibility for discovery, well, it is, and that's, that's all part of it, that's. That should be part of the review of this whole thing, saying, these are the issues you need to know. It's, it's a major, it's a major part of that, that campus, asbestos, and so, they would say they have no responsibility for discovery, I'm not saying they have to clean that up.
See, I read it differently, I read that if they discover it, they're not responsible for it. If they're not responsible for it, if they, if they discover, uh, they discover asbestos, that they're not responsible for, for that, that's the way I'm reading this.
Yeah, I, I think maybe we should get into some clarity on that, because I, I see it from your perspective, and now that you've read it, I see it from, from your point of view as well, so I think, I think we got any clarity on that. So, does anybody read seven point three point three? Yes. Okay. Seven point three point one. Well, that whole, that whole section, point one, point two, point three, it all, it all reference, it all references that. And then Article fourteen, controlling laws, it says what I don't, whether it says this agreement is to be governed by the law of the principal place of business and the engineer, which is asked to do this. Needs to be run item, that's, that's step one. Where is that one? Article fourteen on that page. Says controlling laws are run item, but the agreement will be governed by the law of the principal place of business and the engineer, and that's not, that's not correct. Owner, owner, principal place of, excuse me, owner.
Okay, uh, well, I'll tell you what, there's enough questions I have that have brought up that maybe we should just have Mr. Iglesias hold this again and not approve this, this evening. Mr. Iglesias, is that okay with you?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. President, I was online with, uh, Ms. Wells on, on that issue, could you restate the question?
There's, there's enough questions that were brought up that we'd like to hold off on, and have you just go through this contract one more time, and, and we have a few questions that we'd like to bring up.
Yeah, these are new, these are new, uh, new issues, I think we should bring up with Ms. Wells.
Okay.
Ms. Sal, do you have some questions as well?
No, you've already hit them, thank you.
Any other, uh, point, Mister Vadne?
No.
Okay, so we'll just continue this, uh, yes, Madam Clerk?
Correct me if I'm wrong, but because we're not acting on it, do the maker of the motion in the second have to withdraw?
No, we can just, uh, it was motion approved, now we're just gonna, oh, and.
And we draw the motion, okay.
I need the second to withdraw as well.
Good job.
Thank you.
Alright, I don't see a need to, I don't see it necessarily along the rule of the Halliwell Committee ordinance, uh, I think that's still something, even though we addressed, we have problems that we have to address. This contract doesn't have anything to do directly with the, uh, with the committee, so I would like to make a more, I would like to take a motion to approve the, uh, Madam Clerk? Uh, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing the Halliwell Committee. No, that's, uh, okay. Did I make the motion? Yeah, I made the motion, that's fine, you second it. Uh, roll call please.
What, discussion?
I'm sorry, discussion.
The reason, the reason that I, that I asked this to be, to be viewed after the fact was, when you read what we're, what we're asking this committee to do. Some of the things that we're asking this committee to do is exactly what we're paying Weston and Sampson to do, that's why, that's why I wanted one to do before the other.
Correct, but the committee has to take, this is gonna be reviewed and it's gonna be, uh, taken care of by Mr. Iglesias in a timely fashion. And, uh, with the way things are now with COVID, it's gonna take quite some time to get this thing organized and hit off the ground.
Yeah, I understand that.
So I would like that, if they don't know, but I would like to, uh, I would, I would like to at least see the thing that, that, because this is, we didn't even stop that people on.
You know, all due respect, Mr. President, you interrupted me, you recognized me and I was speaking, you interrupted. I had asked that this be, this be stopped until we did that, because there were things that were asking this group to do and that we're paying somebody to do. I'm not saying to stop this and not do this, it's not my intent. My intent is we need to clarify what the role of this board is, what the role of this committee would be, because we're asking them to do something that we're paying professionals eighty-four thousand dollars to do. It's, it's repetitive and, and all due respect to the people that we may appoint to this, we're paying people to do this job. And so I'm looking to clarify some of the issues that we're asking this committee to do. As well as some of, some of the other terms of, of, of the board. I'm not opposed to having nine people there, but I think we need to look at it differently. And I would say we have seven appointed people, and the administrator has a seat on that board, is an executive, and so is the town planner. As members of that board, executive members of the board. The other issue that I was looking at was co-termist terms. This is a long-term project, this is not a two-year project, it's gonna, it's gonna take our engineers almost a year to do the, the whole review of this one. This is not a short-term thing where we make these people co-termist with the council, where this council could change over. And then we change over that board, we need to put people in place with staggered terms, so there's continuity. For a longer period of time that don't serve just at the pleasure of the board or the administrator. We need to appoint like the zoning board, asset management, the planning board, with, with five, five or longer year terms. So that they're there for a while to keep this going, so it's continuity, not two years and then we can actually change over the board, and two years and change over the board. We need, we need to get out of this co-termist with the council or something like this, this is a long, long-term project, this is a ten-year project, potentially. So we need to get out of this co-termist, and that's, that's another issue that I have to use. Those are the two, those are the two. I'm not saying to stop it, I'm just saying, you know, draft is something, and now we're looking at the draft, and I'm just making comments on it.
Well, we asked Mr. Iglesias to draw this up for us last week, and none of these issues came up, he didn't bring any of these up last week, and we've been. We could be approving something right now with those changes, with those, uh, changes on there, if that were the case.
How, how can, how can we change that? I can't discuss this on, in, on, in an email, with the changes.
Oh, we, we had a.
This is where, this is where we discussed the changes, I'm just, I'm just putting them out there, I'm just putting this stuff out there. The, the, it's my experience in going through with this stuff, that co-termist thing, it, it's not a good fit for this project. It needs to be, it needs to be staggered terms, and then, because it's a long-term project. And I think that the nine people, that's fine, but based on, on the makeup that, that the solicitor drew up. But then, seven-member board with the administrator and the town planner, the executive member of that board, we're still gonna count that.
That's not what it says, that's not what it says.
I know that's not what it says.
So there's no reason why we can't have a nine-member board with the administrator still serving and assisting on, on the, on the board. We can have nine, we can have, uh, the appointed members. And all those, and exactly what you said, there's no reason why it has to be that down to seven, this is very highly sought out in the panel. And, uh, there's no reason why we can't have nine, nine residents on this board.
Mr. President? Okay, the language of co-termists applies to the council's appointments, be co-termists with the council, so if it's a two-year term of council, it's two-year. The other co-term, the other time, uh, co-termist suspension is with the town administrator's co-termists of four years. Now, I will certainly be an ex-official on that, as will the town planner, sure, the town building and planning, zoning official will be involved in this as well, if they assure you they will be. So, um, the only co-termists is the appointments, uh, who the council makes and who the town administrator makes.
Well, if, if it's co-termist, and a new council comes in, they get reviewed, so nobody's locked in, so you can have somebody on there that's not showing up, or whatever reasons you have that you don't, you're not happy with the performance. Co-termist means that they get reviewed in two years, or we can replace them, you appoint somebody for five years, and I'm not, I don't wanna get stuck with anybody, I don't have a problem with doing the co-termists.
You politicize the appointments, that's what's happening when you do that.
That's some of the.
When you, when you make the co-termists, when it wants to.
It's everything political positions, everything we're appointing, every one of the positions we made tonight up was about political positions, every single one of them. They're all political, why, why do you think some people didn't get second, or, or even get a nomination? Everything we do in here is political. Anything else? Anybody else? Alright, so what do we have here, we have a, we.
We have a motion to approve the resolution.
And we have a second?
And we have a second.
Okay, does anybody have any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Elves?
No.
Mister Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mister Vadne?
No.
Mister Bureau?
Yes.
Okay, so, we're at G, correct?
We are.
Discussion by council vote of other action on reallocating some or all funds from fund balance restoration contingency. From the schoolhouse exterior restoration to capital outlays, how about schoolhouse exterior restoration? Uh, Mister Ashes?
Yes, this, there were monies put aside in contingency, waiting the approval of the state budget, uh, making sure that the school was fully funded. Um, the state budget was approved and the school was fully funded, so we are asking at this time that the twenty, twenty-five thousand. Go to where it was originally, um, requested to go to, which is for the schoolhouse exterior restoration capital outlays. The amount of twenty-five thousand, did I already say that, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead, do it.
You talked over each other, you're good, okay.
Alright.
Uh, is there a motion to approve reallocating, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars from, uh. From the capital to the fund balance restoration? from the capital to the fund balance restoration?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the reallocation of twenty-five thousand dollars to the capital outlays of the current schoolhouse exterior and restoration.
Thank you.
Uh, excuse me, I, I said. In shorter terms, same thing.
You did. Okay. One second.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Uh, discussion by council vote on other action on award of bid for purchase of new fire trucks. Mr. Jesus?
Yes, um, Chief Shardia had received three quotes using the HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program. And, um, he received three quotes, he's requesting to use CNS Specialty, which is the lowest quote of five hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars and nine cents. And that will be coming from the third-party billing account Fund Twenty.
Now, uh, is it, the chief's not here, chief on?
He should be on.
Was.
Yes, Mr. President, I'm on.
Chief, can you hear me? Yeah, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Uh, we discussed, um, a week and a half ago about leasing, is that not something we'll look into anymore?
Uh, actually, we do still believe that that's a viable option for us for purchasing the apparatus. Um, I did discuss it with Cynthia a little bit. There has been no hard-fact decision on exactly what we're gonna do in terms of the, the financing or full payment when it arrives. But it's the department's position that, uh, if we finance the apparatus, that will make, keep the third-party billing account a little bit more solvent uh, for future purchases. Uh, what it does is, um, if we finance it, it gives the manufacturer the upfront payment for the truck. And it gives us about a ten thousand dollar pre-construction discount, uh, on the, on the base price. There's no deposit required upfront, so, uh, in reality, we wouldn't owe any money until the truck is delivered. Uh, once it's delivered, we would have annual payments. The salesperson and the, the financing company broke down the payments for me. Uh, if we were looking at a five-year, uh, term in terms of financing, we'd be paying about a hundred and nineteen-five uh, every year, uh, for, for the truck. So, um, you know, and that would, that would keep money available in that account instead of taking it all out in one shot because we do have a rescue. That's gonna be due for replacement, uh, in twenty-three. Uh, we're, we're moving right along with the purchasing schedule that Finance has set up along with the past administrator. Uh, this is pretty much the first step, uh, of that to, to get that process going. We feel strongly that this, this purchase needs to take place now. This truck is going to be replacing our twenty-year-old, um, HME Central States Pumper. Uh, of which is, has been put into reserve status since we received our, uh, new engine back in two thousand and eighteen. Since that truck has been in reserve, uh, in December of eighteen, we've spent just over twenty-seven thousand dollars just to keep it reliable for us to be able to put on the road when needed. Um, seems as though every time we have to have it inspected through the Department of Transportation or have its annual pumps, uh, testing done. Something is wrong. Uh, recently, we just, back in October. Uh, we brought it down for a state inspection and we had to replace the, the front rims on the, on the truck because they were so rotted, it wouldn't pass inspection. It had a leaky fuel tank. It had several pump issues, so it wouldn't pass its pump test. Uh, when they ended up dropping the fuel tank to put the new one in, they found a, a lot of rot and rotted out one of the cross-members that needed to be replaced. Uh, that was something that we would have not known had we had to replace the, uh, the fuel tank. So, uh, this truck is.
Chief, I, I don't think anybody questioned the need for the truck. I think what we question here is what you're talking about, the leasing is not what's, what, is not what's before us.
Uh, that was actually something, that was actually something. That was something that Finance and myself had had a discussion and neither one of us was sure if that was, uh, something that needed to be discussed tonight or something that could be discussed down the road because we are still probably a month, maybe two months away from finalizing the truck. We have to still vet the, the specifications some more. The manufacturer has to come up with the drawings. So, um, it was our thought that maybe we could wait until we sign on the dotted line uh, to decide if we were going to finance or if we were gonna pay it, um, you know, all in full on delivery.
Are you suggesting that we hold off on this, this agenda right now?
Um, I would be, go ahead Cynthia.
Um, I would like to do a little bit more research on it, Council President. Um, I don't feel at this time it would be cost-efficient. We do have the funds. In twenty, we also have a plan for the next six years of how all these rescues and engines will be purchased. With the third-party billing. Unless I can come up with an analysis that financing is a cost-efficient way of going. I don't see why we would wanna go that route, depending on the interest rates and so forth. So I would like to see all the documents. See what the finance, what the charges are, what the finance interest is and so forth, and move that way. We don't wanna borrow if we don't have to. It, it just affects our ratings, it affects our bond ratings, um. If we have the funds, I just would like to do analysis before I recommend what route to go, if, if I may, please.
Okay, you want us to hold off on this then?
Well, I would like you to award the bid. We have the funds. Um, and then I can do some analysis and go to the, and go to town council whether we wanna finance it or pay it upfront.
And, uh, if I can weigh in on that too, Mr. President?
Bucko, I'm sorry.
Right. If I can weigh in on that too, Mr. President, I have, I have no problem with that. I, I would like to see the bid awarded tonight. Uh, so that we can keep moving forward to, you know, uh, get the process going. Um, like I said earlier, we're still a month, maybe two months away from really solidifying everything and then, um, you know, in terms of the payment, uh, yes, we would have to decide if we're gonna finance at the time of signing. But if we, uh, if we decide that we're gonna pay it in full, we're, we're probably twelve months away from, um, seeing that truck.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions to the chief?
Chief, can I ask one question?
Yes.
On the quote for CNS Specialty, it just at the bottom, it says if the proposal is not accepted by the purchaser within thirty days uh, for the bid, they reserve the right to withdraw. So is this bid still valid?
I'm sorry, councilwoman, the audio is kinda bad. I, I can't hear your question.
Is the CNS Specialty quote, it says it's only valid for thirty days. So are they still standing by this quote?
I would assume so, um, but, uh, Mr. Hero was on the call. Skipper, is that, uh, is that quote still good?
He was.
Yes, uh, that quote is still good. I can amend the proposal to, uh, uh, another sixty days.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. President, the, the, the only question that I have to the Finance Director is, this HGAC Cooperative Purchasing Program, does that meet our rule of purchasing guidelines by, um, policy ordinance or charter?
Um, I would say yes, I did, um, reach out to the state and we, we are allowed to use other, um, purchasing programs. This is an MPA. And, and, and the, um, Fire Department is a member of it. You have to pay a membership. Um, to get apparatus at, at, at a, you know, competitive rate for any fire apparatus. So they are a member. Um, so they got the quotes from three of the, um, vendors.
Okay, no, you answered my question. It's, it goes under MPA, so that's, that was my question.
Yes, it is MPA. It's just, I wanted to word it the way it's worded in the program. But it, that's the way they cooperative purchasing program, but it's, it's like our MPA in the state of Rhode Island.
The only reason I ask the question is, is most, most of us know is that the town buys these trucks. We're the owners of the trucks. And we have the Department of Restaurant, which is a separate company, use the trucks. And so I just wanted to make sure that we're following the right procedure in purchasing the thing. Now, I'm not crossing the line, it's gonna come back to someone who's saying, look, you're pushing it wrong.
Right.
We've been delayed the process, that's all.
Yes, thank you.
Councilman, if I could just, uh, say that this, uh, company that, uh, we're proposing that the per, the purchase be through is uh, the same MPA that they purchased Engine One off of back in eighteen.
Oh, that's correct.
Thank you, Chief.
I have a question for, uh, this, Mr. Jesus?
Yes.
So what you're looking for is that regardless of how it's gonna be financed, whether we're gonna pay for it or whether we're gonna do the lease. Uh, you're still looking for the approval of the five hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-eight dollars, correct?
Yes, please, so we can get the, um, the process going. A, as you can imagine, it takes a while. So I, I'm going to request that Chief Shardia send me all the information on the financing of it. And I'll work on that as soon as possible and present it to the town council. But meanwhile, yes, I, I would recommend that you, um, approve the bid today, if you can, please.
Okay. Anyone have any other questions?
Uh, Mr. President, if I may add too, I guess, I just wanna make sure that everything's out on the table, uh, right up front, that, um, this funding is for the apparatus only. A, a little bit further on down the road, once we, we sign on the dotted line for the truck and, and we get a little bit closer to delivery. Um, we're gonna be asking for some funding through Fund Twenty again, uh, for some equipment for the truck. We need some radio equipment, some hose and things of that nature. So, um, but this, this, uh, money here is for the, for the piece of apparatus only.
Okay.
Mr. President, for the chief, just, just so we're clear, chief, so what we're saying is that there's a potential for change orders on this job once it's, once it's ordered.
Correct. Uh, as you go through the process, once we go through the spec some more with, with CNS, we may take things out of the spec. That may make the truck a little bit cheaper. Uh, some things may go in that may bring it back up. It's, it's gonna hover right around the, uh, the five sixty-one. And then during manufacturing, there's some circumstances sometimes where there's change orders where the, the price can come down. So, um, you know, this is a probably a, a pretty solid price, but it could go one way or the other, just by virtue of maybe a, a few thousand dollars, one way or the other. I certainly don't expect it to go up to, you know, five ninety, you know, for the truck itself, you know, to get real expensive. It, it, it may fluctuate here or there because of change orders.
Anything else? Okay, so I'll let you take a motion to purchase the fire truck from CNS Specialty in the amount of five hundred sixty-one thousand, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, nine cents. The funding for the fire truck will come from third-party billing account on twenty. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call please.
Sorry. Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Thank you very much, council.
Thank you. Discussion by council vote on other action on awarding a bid for tree trimming. Mr. Jesus?
Okay, this came from the recommendation of the Director of Public Works. He also used, he, he used the Rhode Island Division of Purchase, MPA number three seventy-two for tree and shrub trimming removal. He would like to award it to Stanley Tree Services not to exceed the amount of fifty thousand, which is the amount in the DPW tree trimming removal budget.
Okay, any questions, please?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we award the tree trimming in the amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars to Stanley Tree Service with the state MPA number three seventy-two.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote on other action on award of, awarding a bid for twenty-twenty police vehicles. Mr. Jesus?
Okay, this went out on, to bid on December seventeenth. Um, the lowest bidder was MHQ Municipal Vehicles for the amount of, for three SUVs in the amount of a hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and seventy-five and two fusions for the amount of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ten. Um, the fusions does include all the equipment. Um, so even though it was a little bit higher than the, than Belize Nissan. Um, Belize Nissan did not include the equipment that was needed in the amount six thousand, six hundred and ten dollars. I wanna point out that this was approved in the fiscal twenty-one budget, but it was approved as four SUVs. They decided to get three SUVs and two fusions for the same price, and I'm gonna tell you how that came up. Um, the capital that was approved was for a hundred and ninety thousand, and we also had put in a half a SUV, I know it doesn't make sense, but twenty-seven thousand in reserves from last year's capital budget. So they do have the funds to buy all five vehicles at this time. And I don't know if Chief Lafferty's on the phone, if he wants to add anything to it.
Yeah.
Chief, is there anyone?
He was earlier, let me check.
So the grand total of it is two hundred and seven thousand, two eighty-five. And, um, we have a hundred and ninety thousand in capital and twenty-seven, twenty-seven thousand reserve from last year's capital.
There you go. Chief and Donovan are on.
Good evening. This is Chief Lafferty, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yes, um, what Cynthia discussed earlier about the interceptors and the fusions, uh, is correct. We decided to purchase the two unmarked fusions uh, in replacement for just one SUV. The money is, is almost equal. Due to the fact the supply changed with COVID, uh, Ford's not making fusions anymore and they're, they're flying off the parking lots. Uh, MHQ is one of the main providers of police vehicles, uh, in New England. They get our vehicles in a timely manner. Uh, our fleet, uh, we're, one of our cars is up to almost a hundred thirty thousand, the captain's car that goes back and forth to Warwick. So we felt there was proof for fusions now before we checked out them and took them next year.
Anybody have any questions to the chief? Any questions to Mr. Jesus on this? Okay, I'll take a motion to awarding of the twenty-twenty police vehicles to MHQ Municipal Vehicles in the amount of two hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars. The funding for the police vehicles will come from this year twenty-two capital reserves and this year twenty-twenty-one capital reserve. Take a motion?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the award to MHQ Municipal Vehicles to provide for purchase three intercept SUVs at a price of fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-five each. And two fusions in the amount of twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and five dollars for a total of two hundred and seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadne?
Yes.
Mr. Biergert?
Yes.
Okay, discussion by council vote on other action on a letter of engagement from Windborne and Silver Tree LLC for services and interim assessor to the town of Ross Smith Hill. Uh, Mrs. Zolinski, can you?
Yes, yes. As the council is aware, we've been out without a tax assessor since December, in November. Uh, we have a deputy assessor in that position right now, uh, so why this is before you, uh, is to bring in Mr. Allen Goode, who is a certified assessor, a certified appraiser to assist the deputy assessor, um. to assist the deputy assessor in pretty much doing an analysis of the deputy assessor's skillset. We, we went out to find assessors and we didn't have much luck there. We had two applicants, one was the deputy assessor and one was a qualified individual. We're, we're still trying to find another applicant. But in the interim, we would like to hire Mr. Booth so he can come in and to assist us for 10 to 15 hours a week, roughly $75. I don't see it being more than 10 hours a week. And Mr. Booth is graciously, apart from FaceTime or 10 hours, will be readily available for phone conversations with the deputy assessor. So, I think this is something that's warranted. Until such time, there's an appointment of a tax assessor.
Okay. Do you satisfy with the contract?
I am, yes.
Okay, so we'll do two motions. One motion to approve the contract and then a motion to approve the administrative signing. So, we have a motion to approve the administrative, the contract with Windborne and Silvertree LLC.
Second.
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
I have a question on this.
Go ahead, just.
Funding is coming from unpaid salary, correct? Yes. My assumption-
There's more than unpaid salary remaining.
Just, just verifying that. Yes.
And Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
And now I'll entertain a motion to authorize the administrative signing contract with Windborne and Silvertree LLC. Motion to approve the administrative signature.
Seven.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote on the action on abatements and supplemental bills. Mr. Jesus?
Yeah, abatements came from the recommendation of the deputy tax assessor in the amount of $2,766.76. Do you want me to do them separate? I'm sorry. And then supplementals after?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay, sorry. Go.
We need a motion to approve the abatements.
I'm sorry.
Oh, she was asking if you wanted her to do the abatements and supplemental separate. You wanted to go over the individual item separate? Cynthia, can you go over each individual item separately?
Sure. So, the first account is Kimberly Godfrey. Is that what you want me to do is tell you, go individually? Okay. So, that's for the amount of $249.39 and that was, lot size was reduced. And I believe it was an easement when the sewer was put on. There was an easement that they reduced the property lot size by. The second and third one was wrong account number and owners. And you'll see in that, in a supplemental bill that actually those two, that piece of land actually belongs to the town of North Smithfield. It was, it came back to the town of North Smithfield during a tax sale in 2015. Jennifer found that while she was researching something for someone else regarding Zero Quaker Highway. So, we abated that and you'll see that being supplemented on the next page. And then the last one, it was a border review appeal and that was just an assessment reduction of the amount of $2,361,087. So, that's for a total of $2,766.76.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Jesus? Can motion approve the abatements for $2,766,76.
I'll make a motion to approve the abatements for $2,766,76.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote on the action on Assistant Town Solicitor Engagement Agreement.
Mr., you forgot the supplemental part. I can page you that.
This up.
I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. The supplemental, like I discussed earlier, it was just the wrong account. It, that lot, that particular plot and lot belongs to the town of North Smithfields. So, basically, she just abated one and, and it turned over to the town of North Smithfield for the amount of $155.50.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the supplemental bill, $155.50.
Motion and second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Discussion by council vote on the action on Assistant Town Solicitor Engagement Agreement. This is the same contract that he had, only the other's name has changed in dates that he had back. I will make a motion to approve the contract.
Second of discussion?
We have a second discussion, go ahead.
Just on the top, should it say Assistant Town Solicitor Engagement rather than just Town Solicitor Abatement?
Mr. Iglesias, you did it?
Yes.
Of the contract, the question is on the contract that we have, Mr. Ashamo. It's on the top, the heading says, "Town of North Smithfield, Town Solicitor Engagement Agreement." The question was, should that say Assistant Town Solicitor Engagement Agreement?
It, it should. I, I'd ask for that, just accept that amended. It, it refers to, in the body and language, I should make that the title.
Okay, so can we approve it as amended then?
Yeah. I mean, the, just for clarification, Town Solicitor Engagement includes both the Town Solicitor and the Assistant. This is the Assistant one. But if you want it on the top, it perfectly, because I would just ask that it be amended for clarification.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Can motion approve as amended?
Is that your amendment to the motion?
Amendment, no.
So, you have a motion on the table to approve and it's seconded by Ms. Alves? So, you have to amend it to be the motion to approve as amended? And then she has to second it and then I can-
Amend the motion and the second can amend the motion?
And then I can take the vote. Because right now, the, the motion on the table is to approve.
Okay.
I know, it's complicated.
You can just withdraw.
You can just, you can, yeah, you can both withdraw and then just start anew.
She's going to withdraw.
Do you?
I'll withdraw.
And you withdraw yours as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, just start all over again.
Just start all over again?
Yes.
To approve the contract, the contract with the Assistant Town Solicitor as amended.
Thank you.
Discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we authorize the town administrative sign.
Motion, wait a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
Discussion by council vote on the action on public library ownership of Zandaya Park. So, what they're looking to do here is get the Zandaya Park from the library to the town. And I did speak to Mr. Pedigas, the Director of Public Works, and he advised me that, that they could easily, it would not be an issue of maintaining this park with the current stuff that they have.
Thank you.
So, based on that, do we have a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
No, sir, you have executive session.
Sorry, we're going to go over executive session now. Right. Go back to the top of the agenda. Executive session.
You have to go into executive session. You're still in an open meeting. Yeah. You need a motion to go into executive session. I have to remove everybody and then you can go on that.
All right.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we, that we move into executive session on potential litigation and no litigation presentation of town council or claim for the man against town of those who free line high rocks to the hills and pursue the round general law 45-5-15.
Second.
Roll call.
Ms. Alves?
Yes.
Mr. Corvo?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Hara?
Yes.
Mr. Vadenay?
Yes.
Mr. Biergard?
Yes.
All right, hang on. Okay. Now, we have to do the motion.
Well, you've got to open it up to everybody, right?
Still the minutes and that one vote was taken.
But, uh, Madam Clerk, is the public back in now, though?
There's only you and Cynthia, everybody left.
All right.
But I am reporting again.
Still make the motion, 4246-5-8-2 to close executive session, seal the minutes and indicate that one vote was taken. Second?
Second.
Roll call.